And everything you would come out and fill them and every time I would call you guys would come. But, um, so I've been calling. I think Hunter is the guy that runs the, anyway, I've been talking to him and all of them actually, but I, I'm just asking for a, um, for a new road, for an upgrade due to all the traffic and it's tore up, it's destroyed, it's got holes, it's falling apart, it's but, um, I like to keep things nice in Carroll County and I pick up trash up and down the roads and my neighborhood and I just want to continue, you know, having a really nice road. So I'm asking for an upgrade.
Is this part of the, they didn't talk to redo surfacing on some of this?
No, they keep telling me no. They've told me no for years, but.
Well, I'm just saying, well, since it's part of the detour, I didn't know if we video.
I hear they're using it that way, but it's not.
So there's not one, one that we recorded before and after?
The official detour goes clear over the 29th.
It says it does, but we're getting all the traffic. It's the only road from 18 to 26 that goes all the way through. And they're using it, trust me. Not only, I mean, C-Hint trucks, hog trucks, um, heavy trucks. And they're going so fast and they're going right over that hill, right down the middle of the road. And I just, all our kids survived it. We have grandkids out there too, but I'm just worried about how fast they go and not so much how fast. I just want the road resurfaced and I'm asking for an upgrade, please.
I say let's go back to gravel.
I've been taking it to the church.
You'll be divorced if we do.
I pray I take it to the church.
That's the first time I ever heard anybody ask for gravel.
I was happy with the gravel.
I didn't really want to break him because he's I'm asking for not chip and seal, but black top. Please.
Well, that's something he could put on his radar and
I did, actually.
It's like, how much is it for a mile of pavement? Eighty thousand?
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot.
I know it is, but it's, it's a nice area. It's a nice road. It's and I know everybody's probably getting, people pulling in wanting to put up, they're pulling in our driveways wanting to put up windmills and solar out there. Yes.
There is plenty of, they had a meeting about it not long ago. Our ordinance is
I'm against it. I'm against it, but I do believe in nice roads, nice houses and fixing stuff up and keeping it nice. And you guys have been good to me in Carroll County, but you know, I mean, I don't, I pay taxes, but I don't come from a family with big money, so I just kind of feel like I kind of get pushed to the side because, you know, well, anyway.
Tell me we're going there.
It's really nice, but I just, I just want an upgrade if you guys can, please.
We can put it on our radar. I can't guarantee it. I, we can tell you this, we can get it fixed back up to where it was. It might be chip and seal, but.
Okay, chip and seal, I'll take it, but I'm praying for black top.
I think everybody with a gravel road is praying for black top.
It's not, I mean, I'll take chip and seal. I'm so thankful, I'm so thankful for what you guys do do, but it's just, I mean, it's, it's bad. It's scary going over that hill. I've always wanted a sign that says dangerous intersection, but.
It's not an intersection.
It's not an intersection.
Keep left or keep right.
But when the big trucks come over, I mean, I've seen.
We can put a sign up that says blind hill, right?
Yeah, or.
Yeah, that would be nice.
If necessary, stop in and talk to them and figure out what kind of signage they need. And we'll get the signage up.
What about the road though?
Most.
He just told you he can't.
We're gonna miss it on the radar.
Cause I know.
Just to let you know how this usually works, cause most of our good asphalt roads where we really lay down, those come from a grant that we get every year or have in the past. They don't ever guarantee us they're gonna do it another year from the state. But they have now for several years and, uh, we have to start in, when's your next round? It's not until, uh.
Well, just start doing the paperwork and turn it into review, um, here within the next month or so.
Okay, cause I know Indiana's getting more money for roads. I know that.
And they have raised us up some on the amount that we get per year from them. But it takes us, we have to put it into the hopper more or less, you know, we have to identify, okay, this is the road we want to do this year. And then Scott has to put it into the application for it. And that's where we get the money to do the really expensive roads from. The chip seal roads, of course, the gravel roads, we do those ourselves. And those are, none of it's paid out of property tax. It's all paid for from, uh, fuel tax.
Paul, when he was an engineer there, he kind of blew up on one day and he, and I just told my son, taking this to my pastor and to my church and it was like a week later, so.
He just felt sorry for me.
I'm not giving up, so I'm gonna, I'll probably keep kind of begging and praying, but I'm asking for an upgrade, so.
Three fifty is where this church is out there, isn't it?
But it's farther south. I mean, we're.
You're south of the church? Okay.
Right, you know, where it jogs over a little bit, right around the corner. Do you still live in Cutler?
I live just east of Cutler.
Yeah, you're my neighbor.
Just south of the Cutler Road.
It's right there where Derek Fisher's, where the ponds are at.
There's a lot of joggers, Derek Fisher and family and a lot of scooters and, you know, kids driving and stuff, so I just, you know, like I said, my kids are raised, but my grandkids are still out in Carroll County, so I, I.
Traffic starts about 5:00 AM heavy and then about 7:00 PM.
I do have pictures and notes and everything, so I'm, I'm.
Well, we appreciate you coming in and letting us know about it. We.
Scotty will be out there looking.
We are, I'll, I'll probably don't drive it today. Um, but we'll, um, we don't, we can't do anything tomorrow, you know.
Well, that's, I mean, I, I just, in the near future, I just, that road needs an upgrade desperately over all the traffic, so.
And my advice is, don't give up on us either. Keep after us.
Oh, I will.
Now you know who Scotty is.
Oh, I know Laura. My daughter ran around for us. They, it's kind of all in the family, but thank you.
I had a gag order in place, but I broke it, so.
Now you gotta go sleep on the couch?
Well, we may have to call the sheriff department to come rescue me. Notice I said again.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, we're ready for our.
Okay, I've given you three job descriptions that have been approved by their board or their, um, department head. One's a courthouse security, one's patrol sergeant, and one is the EMA director.
This just updated, Tony, for the patrol sergeant?
Yep, all three.
Updated for what?
For a patrol sergeant. They used to have one years ago.
Yeah.
We finally got staff enough to do it again. That's awesome. I like it.
All of them have been updated. EMA's been updated, patrol, courthouse security is new.
Correct. But it don't look like it's a full-time position. Oh, it is.
It's a full time.
Eight to five.
Yep.
Is that the, uh, security one, courthouse, yeah?
Yeah. Well, what's this Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM?
That's one more.
West Pole?
That's the category.
Okay.
These were done by Kent Irwin's office.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve all three.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve all three job descriptions that we have before us. Any comment from anybody? Comment from you guys? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item.
Is approval of a temporary, um, working from home. In other words, this, um, agreement and it's for the community corrections. This person, um, we can't really name names because it's a HIPAA thing, but your policy says 30 days. I know that this, this wanting 30 or three months, because they do already know that you can make an exception. Uh, she has filed the FMLA paperwork, but she has vacation sick time that she's gonna take while they're, um, and then work without pay when severance out. She's a loyal, dedicated employee and both the boards of the judge and the director has okayed this. I just can't get into details why she has to do this, only to take care of a family member.
Understood.
They've all signed it, but the commissioners need to approve it, so, or yes or no.
This part of the community corrections, right?
Community corrections, yes.
Community corrections. And that's about the same thing. Community corrections.
I get it mixed up every day, so. They came into effect about the same time, so. Anyway, I know that the director will be keeping an eye on what she does.
For how long of a period?
The policy says 30 days, but you can go, you can say the three months.
Three, three, is that what they're?
The requesting.
Requesting the three months. I'll make a motion to approve the temporary remove agreement for 90 days.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to prove it for 90 days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The next thing I have disbursement of funds. I have number 11 and number 12 and number 13.
Number 11 is 675,980.52 cents. Number 12 is 2,323,150.32 cents. And 13 is 87.84.
This person is four.
It's, you can't. It's like we do every month. It's for the new jail progress.
So first one will be signing for a million so far. That's for VW's constructions to pay. Basically what we do is we pay VWs and they disperse the money to their contractors, if I remember right.
VW is contractor this.
Right.
Equipment, so yes, we send that off to Simmons Markets and then he distributes. While you guys are thinking about that, the next one, Jake Adams, we can get back on track because, um, he's not supposed to get to October 2nd, so I'm sorry about that.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve all three.
I'll second.
Will all three sign these?
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
I didn't say a second, you're picking. Aye, aye. Up there, just, if we all got a second.
And then the other thing, I just wanted to remind everybody that the edit request will be for October 2nd. We've, we decided that a couple meetings ago, so I was just trying to put a plug in there so it would get back in the paper. And I have sent out an email to all that have filed in the past.
I want to.
Uh, no, it's during irregular.
During.
During irregular meeting.
Did Mike Rattick get one?
No. I did not. He didn't have one last year, so that I sent to, I can send it to him. I think I have his email.
I didn't want to ruin that parking lot, man.
I would appreciate if you'd send it to her.
Okay. I think they've really come along on that parking lot. Anybody else? You think not?
Are they coming back for the Madam Carol, the bridge under the bridge?
I haven't heard from them.
Okay.
That wasn't last year. That was the year before. And I think it might be under the, I don't know.
Do they sell it again?
I don't know.
Yeah, I seen the new owners. It didn't look like a guy was here before.
Well, yeah, that's what, that's where, exactly what I'm coming from.
Yeah, cause it was on TV.
Yeah.
I like, awesome. And it's always busy.
Yeah, it's really, looks like it's crowded. That is all I have, sir.
Okay.
Except for I want to know if you're going to go to your conference so I can get you registered, so I can talk to you about that afterwards.
I want to go to the conference.
It's November 28th. On the 30th.
How soon do you need to know?
Whenever you can, so you can, registration's not a problem. It's getting the hotel room. But you don't stay, right?
Yeah, probably won't stay either. I do. I just gotta make sure I got the vacation time to do it.
Okay, well, let me know.
Okay, are we done?
I'm done.
I don't see.
She just said that Jake will be here on October 2nd.
She just said he'll be here in a little while?
October 2nd.
Oh, October 2nd.
Can I get you just to sign this one? I pray so, Kelly. She missed that. Okay, never mind. I'll get you to sign it later.
Okay, so we're ready for Ted's part here?
Yes.
Resolution on a squad card?
Yes, uh, that's procedure, uh, we did one, we did a vehicle with, uh,
Authorizing transfer.
We did CAS, kind of an ambulance for CAS and we did, uh, something with.
Wolfie Rock?
Yeah, sure, sure. Same procedure. It's not an ordinance, it's, it's a resolution, so you can, you can approve it in one meeting. And then.
Do I have to read it and then?
No, you don't have to do any reading. That's me.
I'll make a motion to approve number 2023-06 to the Dodge Charger and the Delphi School Department.
Okay, so I got, you said second, right? Got a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2023-06. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How many do you want signed? Two, three?
Two. Three, all three of them can sign this.
Did we, did we give this car to him or?
Yeah. We've been trading for it and it's tax, you said it was taxpayers' money anyway, so.
Well, that's how I feel about it. Oh, I turned it the wrong way now. Okay, uh, anything else, Ted?
It's Hawaii.
Okay, so then we're ready for County Treasurer, Melinda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our fall tax deadline is fast approaching, November, end of November, November 13th. And I'm here because I'm concerned about our taxpayers who will not be able to use the elevator. And a lot of our taxpayers prefer to come and pay in person and without that elevator, um, that's gonna be hard.
So what kind of a kiosk are you talking about?
It will just be a table. I talked to Randy last week and he said, um, he could set up a table and set up a computer and printer and everything I would need to make a temporary, um, works place right there in the rotunda.
So you have somebody sitting down here?
Yes, it would probably, probably be me or my first deputy.
We spent $3,000 for a box outside for the same thing. We're not using it?
Oh, no, it's used. No, but there are some people who, um, they want to come in, they don't want to have their check made up. But I'm not really sure, Scott, they just prefer to come in and make sure they've got all their parcels taken care of and make sure they go check for the right amount and, uh, so.
How much is go to cost?
There should be no cost. Randy said it. He's normally here on their, here on the contract and we have the equipment, so it would just be, ideally, if the elevator's up and running, by mid-October, we won't need to do it, but.
Probably won't be though.
Well, that's my fear, so.
I think I'd rather make a decision on this on the second.
Well, I.
See how much further along.
I talked to Randy about waiting until October 2nd and he felt like he needed, he would need more lead time on that.
With the internet, you just can't take your laptop down there and do it? Guess I don't know how it runs, so.
I think it's wonderful that you're thinking about this and people have trouble climbing those stairs because they, they.
Oh, I've been getting phone calls about it.
Well, the thing is, a, a good percentage of the people who come in and pay at the window are our elderly.
Old folks like me.
Yeah, they're just kind of setting their ways and if their, if the elevator's on and, and working order, then I'm gonna get the phone calls and probably you all will too. I'm just trying to be proactive to kind of have a plan.
Do we have to drill holes and all that to run cables there or not?
No, he, he said he would just run the cable like out of area planning and, um, give me set up for desks or a table and relocate one of our computers down there.
So this, nothing's gonna be turned? Just gonna be, just for the month of October?
Well, it's through, through November. Well, it's, it's the 13th this year because of the holiday. So we're not talking any major construction. We're just talking about Randy coming in and getting it set up and probably for about four weeks from mid-October to mid-November. It's gonna be kind of inconvenient for us, but, you know, we're here to serve.
You don't feel like running up down the stairs every 20 minutes? You don't want to get your cardio?
Someone has to pay cash, they will either have to go upstairs or we'll have to run, because this is just, I'm intending it just to be
Bucking the rope, yeah.
So if someone comes in and pays you cash, how you gonna secure that down there in that rotunda with everybody coming in?
I'm not. I'll have to have someone come down and take the cash and receipt it upstairs. So, but, if, but I know my taxpayers and generally the people that come in and pay cash are able to use the stair.
They what?
They're able to use the stairs. So I don't see the cash as being an issue. There may be an isolated incident here and there, but, um.
Well, like Lauren was just saying, you just drop a bucket on a rope down there.
And pull and drop bucket down and reel it up.
I'm in favor of the idea. I like it. I appreciate you wanting to do that.
Yeah, I don't have no issues with that. Just, we spent all that money for that box outside and.
Yeah, that's, the box outside is, is for after hours, though. The box outside isn't for the, the majority of the people paying their taxes. Um, that's for after, people who are coming through town after work.
The weekends.
Or before work and we're not open. So the box is utilized for after-hours payments. People who don't want to put it in the mail, if they don't trust the mail, or they just want to save a stamp. But, and it was very useful, you know, during COVID. But so, I'm talking about a different, um, type of taxpayer.
I entertain a motion, gentlemen.
So it's only gonna be until, like, November 15th? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. After the 13th, our traffic declines deeply.
13.
No cost, just a table?
Yeah, no cost.
Only thing it would be is Randy's hours, is what she's trying to say, I think.
For him just to hook the wire up into the internet system?
And we'd obviously want to let Keith know and make sure he knows where it was going.
Would you put it where the pictures of the veterans are or?
I, I.
Probably just be right outside the office.
It was in that spot where between the elevator and the area planning.
Oh, yeah, come out of area planning, it'd be on the other side, not the veteran's side.
Like out of the way, so. Doesn't impact traffic.
Well, that's where they got the constitution thing set up right now.
I'll walk her by that, so I didn't even look.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll put a table down there and get, have Randy give her, she needs to take tax dollars as well.
And that's just a temporary solution?
Temporary solution until the elevator's repaired. If it's repaired before that, we can cut that off.
We will close up shops and the elevators before November 13th.
For people who, I can, I can come out, pay my tax, I'd prefer to go to the, because I make mistakes. Have to check up and, so I get it confirmed there, so.
So if it's a mistake, it's their fault?
Yeah.
I'll say that.
What's the dates?
Uh, when you start taking them?
Well, I would say from October 16th, which is mid-October. We really don't get real busy until mid-October.
16th to the 13th?
16th to the 13th.
And Randy can get that installed in that time.
So he can do it the week before the 16th.
Do I hear a second? Okay, so I got a motion and a second. A motion to allow a kiosk. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know why we're calling it a kiosk.
That was Randy's turn. That's what she put on her thing, so that's what.
Courthouse usage app, excuse me, application for, uh, Delphi Wendy School, High School Senior Class.
This is.
Eight thirty to ten on 10, 11, 23 for senior picture.
I already talked to Keith about that. He said he is fine with it. Um, we are, they did file their, um, insurance paper, but we're not charging them anything because it's open hours.
I was gonna say that's, yeah.
So, they won't, I think she could till 10 o'clock, but I don't think they'll be here that long, uh, just going.
How many do we have? Just one?
It will be the whole senior class.
All the whole senior class, okay.
I, she's gonna stand on the third floor, I believe, and she can.
Is there?
There's a group picture.
Is there any court hearings going on or this might interrupt?
I don't know. There's been very many there.
And make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The other two from JT Down and he has filed his insurance, insurance and checks that, and Keith has okayed it.
Are you gonna jump in a bounce house, JT?
I will not.
Well, I think that should be a requirement.
Yes.
I think it'll bring crowds.
Sure would. It could be a fundraiser idea.
Uh, and that trunk or treat, that was such a success last year. I mean,
What was?
The trunk or treat, volunteers come in and back into the parking spots and they open their trunks up and the kids walk around the courthouse. I bet we had six, seven hundred kids, it seemed like.
That was huge.
There was people that ran out of candy in the first 45 minutes there was that many kids. It was a great success. I'm gonna make a motion to approve both. The bounce house, though, you can't use stakes.
Yeah, I have reiterated that to our Parks Board. They'll be coordinating with our, uh, Delphi Rotary. Uh, they'll be using their bounce house and so, yes, it'll be set up similar to, uh, Macy Fest when it was up on the courthouse lawn.
Okay.
So, yes, but I will absolutely continue.
Is it gonna be over this area?
Reiterate that. It's actually gonna be, so for the 21st, we'd already got permission, uh, our Delphi Main Street to the kids' own area, a very big gazebo, and so on the 21st, now our Delphi Parks and Recreation just want to have the bounce house setting out. They're gonna have some flyers on some Parks and Recreation, uh, stuff that's on the horizon and just, uh, just, just be out there and have a presence.
It's only gonna be there five or six hours and they can tear up the yard anyway, so.
But yes, well, definitely we'll continue to reiterate that. No stakes in the ground.
Okay, so we have voted over here, didn't we?
No.
Got a, got a motion and a second? Uh, no. You'll second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments on the trunk or treat. I'll share that with our board of director members that, uh, we have two specifically that oversee that, so.
Audrey does a wonderful job.
Yes, Audrey Wardrop and Courtney Kingery are.
Yep, I told her last year, I said, I want to see this back, cause I'll prove it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Then Beth Myers is also gonna be in the bounce house? Is that what I heard too?
Unless you are.
You know, we might talk more about it. It'd be a fundraiser idea.
She really prefers the dump tank.
Dump tank, okay, okay, all right.
In the winter.
In the winter.
No, I mean, I was really impressed with that first time you let trunk or treat come around, because I came with my nieces and nephews and they had a blast. They even had some people brought. They even had some people brought in a trailer where you walk through the trailer, get your candy, and there's spooky things in there. You just hear the kids screaming. It was, I loved it.
And I'm told there is gonna be, there'll be some judging included, where there'll be judging, some different, you know, whether it's best costume or.
Right.
And so there'll be some of that too, and some prizes that'll go with that, so.
She actually asked me to waive the fees on it, but I can't do that because the insurance purposes on that part of it.
Yeah, appreciate the consideration, though, but yes.
Because I think it's wonderful. I enjoy it. I even got to be scanned it.
Aww.
Because I got the ugliest mask on, they said.
Okay. All right, that's part of the mess.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners.
Yep, thank you, JT.
Anything else?
Scotty, everybody left?
No, I don't have anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Oh, and after, always, day late, dollar short.
I know it, I know it. Just, I don't, I don't quite understand. You approved the thing on the twenty-first, which I think is trunk or treat. So what's going on on the twenty-eighth that you?
He has the farmer's market.
It doesn't say that, okay.
Well, he, he's already been approved for that.
All right, this is just added to the bounce house?
He's already been approved for the farmer's market.
So the bounce house is on the twenty-eighth?
I don't know.
No, we'll just look here and see. Uh, bounce house, Saturday the twenty-first, it says over here.
Twenty-eighth is trunk or treat.
Yeah.
Oh, twenty-eighth is trunk or treat?
And that's when the restaurants.
Come on, get with it.
I know it, I know it.
I know you got that new pad that take a lot of money.
My email too.
Okay, so farmer's market and the bounce.
It needs to, it needed to be a lot more than.
One's twenty-first, one's twenty-eighth.
I, I noticed.
I want to make sure this is legal.
The twenty-first is the farmer's market with the bounce house.
Oh, okay.
And twenty-eighth is trunk or treat.
There you go.
Need paper?
No, no, shut up.
Okay, I'll be in here.
Motion to adjourn?
He's already seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thanks, thanks for catching that thing on that.